I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Kristi, if you'd please call the roll.
Jim Green.
Here.
Chuck Lee.
Here.
Chris Brantley.
Here.
Jeff Fayville.
Here.
Rick Kimball.
Here.
Paul Kylo.
Yep.
Nancy McMorris-Ottox.
Here.
Thank you, Kristi. Board members at your packet, at your place tonight, were some additions for tonight's board meeting. You'll have that in front of you. One is an added action item for the hiring of our superintendent and the approval of the employee contract with our individual we've selected. You also have a memorandum of agreement that we'll talk about first reading with regard to the CTE partnership and collaboration. You also have added color maps for the school boundary discussion that we'll be following after the first reading. And then also, there's a color achievement compact for easier viewing when we get into the achievement compact. So hopefully you all have that at your place. And as we get into those agenda items, those addendums are there for you. So we will start tonight with our spotlight on success unless any other board members have agenda modifications. Not seeing any. We'll start with our spotlight on success.
So I'm pleased to welcome Karina Lee, the executive director of the Salem Education Foundation, who will make presentations to the volunteers of the month.
I would like to invite our volunteers of the month for May, Nick Martin, Amy Martin, and Julie Lenhart, to the front, along with Principal Dave Burthoff from Scott Elementary. Nick, and Amy Martin, and Julie Lenhart have been nominated by Scott Elementary School. All three of them are parents of Scott Elementary students and are parent teacher club officers. They have provided consistent leadership for Scott's parent group for the past two years. Nick and Amy were new to the school just last year and immediately got involved. When no one else would step forward, Nick offered to serve as parent club president and brought along Amy as a two-for-one deal. They have increased the involvement of parents and have brought renewed energy and enthusiasm to building partnerships between the school and their community. Julie has been a Scott parent for many years and has been a consistent parent club officer. For the past two years, she has served as the treasurer of the PTC and has worked hard to build up funding for school supports, including new playground equipment. During lean years where volunteerism was low, they could always count on Julie to be there. Julie's collaboration with Nick and Amy has been a boost to Scott Elementary. Together, they have planned fun family nights, they've created a school store, they've beautified the school entry and the staff room, and are now planning a summer library program. Scott Elementary School would not be the same without their support, energy, and enthusiasm. On behalf of the entire Scott community and all of Salem Kaiser, we salute Nick, Amy, and Julie for all that they do. Congratulations.
Jay Reamy, Director of Communications and Community Relations, will make the presentation for the business partner of the month.
Thank you, Dr. Radic, Chair Green, and members of the board. If I could get Claggett Creek Principal Rob Schoper and Brian Greer with Service Master of Salem to come forward and join the board chair, please. And if everybody would stay tuned at the end of this, I've got a kind of late-breaking news announcement I have to make to add to this. Okay, so our business partner of the month is Brian Greer and Service Master of Salem. He was nominated by Claggett Creek Middle School, an active member of the Salem Kaiser Business Community. Brian has also been active in identifying ways to support and encourage both the students and the staff at Claggett Creek Middle School. Brian is committed to supporting the district's vision of graduation through his continued financial support of both the Claggett Creek Leadership and Peer Helper and Avid Programs. Brian understands the value of education and helps make that tangible for students by supporting numerous field trips to local colleges and universities, and helping support various parent education and family nights throughout the school year. The Claggett Creek Leadership and Peer Helper and Avid Programs have been able to accomplish much despite the economic hardships experienced by all due to continued family and community support from those like Brian, excuse me, like Brian and Service Master of Salem. The entire Claggett community wishes to thank Brian and let him know how much they appreciate his support for their students and staff. So congratulations to Service Master of Salem and Brian as our business partner of the month. But there's more. So this is late-breaking news. I think it was just yesterday, maybe the day before, that we got confirmation that through Brian's advocacy and leadership, Service Master of Salem is donating $5,000 to our Parents Guide to Graduation project, which I will be talking about later. So thanks to their support, we'll have a guide to graduation for every single parent in the district. We'll be able to print that. And that would not have been possible without the generous support of Service Master of Salem and Brian Greer. And we'll talk a little more about that later in the meeting. So thank you.
Merrick Reitser, Director of Elementary Education, will make the next presentation.
If I could have Javi Ray Rosa and Principal Carl Paulson up to the front, and Gavin Warner and Principal Clinton Gertnerich up to the front. On April 5th at McKay High School, teams of 4th and 5th graders from 16 different Salem Kaiser Elementary Schools competed in the Math 24 Challenge. The challenge features cards that show four numbers in each corner. The goal is to use all four of those numbers in any combination, addition, subtraction, multiplication, or division, to reach the number 24. Javi Ray Rosa from Cantalaria won the 4th grade division. Wave. Gavin Warner from Shirley Elementary won the 5th grade division. Gavin is a repeat winner from last year's 4th grade division. Both students performed at the highest level in the competition and are being recognized for excellence in mathematics. McKay High School math students and volunteers organized, promoted, and ran the competition, led by Teresa Grindi, who is a program coordinator and math teacher at McKay High School. We honor you both for your outstanding effort and are proud of you and the rest of the participants who competed at the district-wide competition. Congratulations to both of you.
Kelly Carlisle, Director of High Schools, will make the next presentation.
Thank you, Dr. Radic, Chair Green, and members of the board. I'd like to call the following students up. Amy King-Venigong from McKay High School, a senior. Steve Nguyen, sophomore at McKay High School. Wyatt Hoag, senior at McNary High School. And Billy West, a junior at McNary High School. And I believe we also have Ann Garrig, the advisor, and Principal John Honey, both from McNary High School, if you could come forward. The Salem Kaiser School District was well-represented at the Future Business Leaders of America State Leadership Conference, held April 10th through 12th at Portland's Convention Center. Over 40 Salem Kaiser students placed in competition, with Wyatt Hoag, a senior at McNary, Billy West, a junior at McNary, Amy King-Venigong, a senior at McKay, and Steve Nguyen, a sophomore at McKay, all placing first in their events. Wyatt placed first in the economics competition category and fifth in personal finance. Billy's first-place win in business law is in addition to his third-place win in insurance and risk management category. Amy took first place in insurance and risk management and ninth in business presentation. And Steve placed first in introduction to information technology and eighth place in computer problem solving. To see a list of the top 10 competition results for Salem Kaiser students, please go to the district's website at www.salemkaiser.org, and then click on the link for the May Spotlight Story. With over 50 categories, the competition events were either performance-based or written competitions, and sometimes involved both in one category. The conference attendees earned their way to the state conference by placing in the top three in their district competitions earlier in the year. Now, upon placing in the top three in various categories at the state level, these students have earned their way to the National FBLA Leadership Conference to be held in Nashville, Tennessee this summer. Congratulations. And just to note that we have several culminating activities going on in the month of May, and there's a big high school recognition event happening tonight. And so with that in mind, I will call the following students forward. From West Salem High School, these are the ExploraVision winners. Ella Fadeley, Emma Harnish, Cam Johnson, and Anton Schuster, and their principal Ed John. And tonight, they're represented by Emma and Cam. On April 18th, West Salem High School students Ella Fadeley, Emma Harnish, Cam Johnson, and Anton Schuster were awarded with the first-place win in the high school division of the 2014 National Championship of the Annual Toshiba National Science Teachers Association ExploraVision Program. The students were coached and mentored by their teachers, Mr. Williams and Mr. Lampert. ExploraVision is one of the world's largest K-12 science competitions and is a cornerstone of Toshiba's efforts to inspire youth in the fields of science, technology, engineering, and math. The inspiration for this project came from a personal experience with Emma's grandmother having surgery for the replacement of a pacemaker. Knowing that batteries have to be replaced in pacemakers, and not liking the idea of her grandmother having to undergo another surgery, the team came up with an alternative solution for batteries. The West Salem Students Project, called Quantum Dot Energy Harvesters for Powering Implantable Medical Devices, focused on human power sustaining human life. Presently, electronic medical implants such as pacemakers, defibrillators, and neurostimulators rely on batteries that require constant surgical replacement. A convenient and permanent solution will harvest the thermal energy of the human body through a simple heat engine made from quantum dots. For their win at the national competition, each student won a $10,000 savings bond and an all-expense-paid trip to Washington, D.C. in June for the ExploraVision Awards Weekend. To learn more about their winning entry, please go to the ExploraVision website. Congratulations.
Michael Wolff, Chief Operations Officer for the Salem Kaiser School District, will make the next presentation.
Thank you, Dr. Radic, Chair Green, and members of the board. I'd like Jim Jenny to step forward, please. Jim is the manager of Custodial Property Services for the district and was awarded the 2014 Jim Gross-Nicholas Leadership Award by the Oregon School Facilities Management Association. They held their conference in Albany this April. Jim was nominated by Melinda Shoemaker, the facilities manager at North Clackamas School District. And in her nomination, she stated that Jim has demonstrated outstanding leadership and management skills within the association. She further described that his commitment to the district's mission and student achievement is reflected in all that he does. I know this to be absolutely true and appreciate Jim's style and presence within our district, within the business and support services function. Jim has demonstrated outstanding leadership and management skills during the transition of our facilities department as the interim director. He was instrumental in the development and implementation of a department realignment process. The result has positioned the department to effectively and efficiently protect and maintain the district's quarter-of-a-billion-dollar bond investment in schools provided by the 2008 Capital Construction Bond. Jim is recognized as a leader in facilities management throughout the state, and he is respected at every level within our district. We are certainly lucky to have Jim on our team. Congratulations, Jim.
Thank you all. I can say wow to kids that come up with a quantum idea on how to keep pacemakers moving without having to put a battery in. You'd think professionals out there would do it, but our own West Salem kids did it, so good job. And Javi and Gavin, my son did that Project Math 24 competition. It moves fast. And to be champions, you've got to be thinking quick, so congratulations. We'll move on to our next agenda item. That's audience communications, related to agenda items only. We have one person signed up. If you come to the mic and please state your name. You'll be limited to three minutes. I'll hand the timers down for Mr. DiCapellos. When the orange light goes on, you'll have, I believe, 30 seconds left. When the red light goes on, your time is up. Jason Brandt. Jason?
Good evening, Superintendent Radic, Chairperson Green, and members of the Salem Kaiser School Board. My name is Jason Brandt, CEO of the Salem Area Chamber of Commerce. It's an honor to be here. Actually, don't feel very qualified. I am a product of the Salem Kaiser School District as a graduate myself, but some of these kids, I think, are making us look bad, don't you think? I mean, pretty amazing stories out there. It's wonderful to hear all the recognition for the students and the parents as well as the staff. So pleasure to be here this evening. Just wanted to make some brief comments in relation to the memorandum of agreement that's on your agenda tonight, 5A. The Salem Area Chamber of Commerce is very much in support, in favor of the staff recommendation before you, and we just want to continue showing our support for the efforts behind a career tech high school in our Salem Kaiser community. Feel that's incredibly important to the future of our regional economy. Just a couple interesting facts that I think we're all learning more about as more and more baby boomers are retiring, but 10,000 baby boomers in this country retire today. And for every two baby boomers that are retiring, there's only 1.8 people to replace them. And one of the interesting things we've seen during the time of the recession years that we've gone through in our community as well as across the country is the fact that we've had this focus on the creation of jobs, and that has quickly transitioned to a focus on finding qualified workers and making sure that we have a strategy that's proactive in being there for the youth that are in our community today and making sure they have opportunities to be gainfully employed in the future. And a career tech high school is an incredibly important element to our future success in our regional economy. So wanted to come tonight and express our deep commitment to the work that's being done to further this public-private partnership, and wish you all the best in your continued volunteer service on behalf of the many students touched in our Salem Kaiser School District. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jason. And no one else has signed up. Is there anyone else that would like to speak to the agenda items? If not, we'll move on. Board members, as I mentioned earlier, we do have an action item tonight. At your spot, as you walked in, was the board plate with regard to a hiring of our superintendent and approval of the employment contract. You'll have that packet in front of you. Chuck Lee and myself, after discussions with the board, were allowed to enter into negotiations with our first-choice candidate. Our first-choice candidate and the person that we are offering the position to is here tonight. It is Kristi Perry. So the board is recommending approval of hiring Kristi and approval of her contract. I'd entertain a motion. Moved by Paul?
Second.
Second by Jeff. Were you seconding? Seconded by Jeff. He got his hand up. Sorry, Nancy. Discussion.
I'll make a statement. I couldn't be more happy that you reached financial agreement with this lady. She impressed me greatly during the interview process, even when I was on the phone from a long way away. And I traveled around the district with her when she came here for the final, and I'm just real pleased to see her coming to join us.
Anyone else?
Well, I'll echo that, if I could. I think that we're very fortunate. As you know, we invited an awful lot of candidates into the district and interviewed an awful lot of people, and decided not to hire a couple of our finalists the first time around. And we went out again, found some excellent candidates the second time around, and there was just something that spoke to, at least me, about the value of having someone who has been serving as a superintendent in the state of Oregon because of the uniqueness of our state and the issues and things. So I was very pleased to see the finalists. I thought they were both very qualified, and I'm very pleased that Kristi has agreed to join us and look forward to working with her for many years.
Nancy?
I'd like to echo those same sentiments, but I'd also like to say that this process has made me feel really honored to be part of this board. I think the process was really positive, made me like you all a lot better.
Well, we've got to spend a lot of time together, Nancy.
We certainly did. But it was not an easy process, but everybody worked really hard and came together at a really quality candidate, so I'm really excited.
Rick?
Thank you, Chair Green. I think we really have found the right person to lead our district forward into the future. Next year is going to be just as much work as this year, gang, because we need to go through a governance structure discussion, and we all need to participate in that conversation. So I'm looking forward to that as well.
Jeff?
I'm also very happy to welcome Kristi into the district and looking forward to working with her going forward.
And I just want to be able to thank all of you. This took a lot of time on behalf of the board. It was pretty courageous of us to go out again, I think, and you heard that from many of our candidates. It's awful hard to go out again, and we took a lot of time, and I appreciate that. I know a lot of you. Jeff, you have young kids at home. I missed a lot of Little League games. Nancy was in and out depending on delivery of babies, and Chris called in from Hawaii. And Paul, and Rick, and Chuck also spent a lot of time. We were together on a Saturday for part of a day, so I appreciate all the hard work that you all put in. And she's not here tonight. She may be on vacation because we wore her out, but I want to thank Mary Paulson. She was the staff that was directed to work with us on this, and I'm pretty sure she's not going to accept any more phone calls from me on her cellphone for quite some time. But I really want to thank Mary. I want to thank the rest of the staff, all the people in the district and the community who came out to our community forums to meet all of our candidates that we brought forward. And I'm very happy to have Kristi Perry as our next superintendent. Kristi, if you could please stand. Welcome.
Sure, you bet, Kristi.
Okay, this is the first time I can really say this out loud. I am really excited to be here. The quality of your board, the quality of your community. So I just feel a little overwhelmed by the excitement that I've finally been able to breathe after a little bit of time. But I will be here on July 1st as I close up my district and...
Well, you're not closing Dallas. You're transitioning Dallas.
My transition of my district, but it is a great honor to be selected, and I just look forward to the opportunities in this next year. We will be in this together, and incredible community support for your process, as I got to watch that. And that is what makes me especially excited to be here. Your commitment, your community's commitment, and your staff was incredible in the process and on our school visits to take time out of their day during such a busy time to escort and answer questions through several candidates. So really excited to be here, and thank you so much for the opportunity.
Thank you, Kristi. So we do need to vote. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, same sign. It is unanimous. Kristi, welcome to our district.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, and again, board members, thank you so much for your patience and all your work through that process. It was a long process. We started back in the fall, so again, thank you for all your time and effort. It's the most important decision we make as a board, and as you've all heard and seen, we've landed on the right candidate. So looking forward to working with Kristi into the future. Next up is adoption of our consent calendar. Did anyone need to pull anything off the consent calendar?
I have a couple of questions.
Okay.
But I don't know that I need to pull them.
All right. Rick?
I think, can I comment? I think we need to pull anything we want to talk about.
Okay. Paul, what did you want to question?
I just had a question on the grant budgets, the Oregon Minority Educator Pipeline, what the activities were that we were doing.
Okay, so we'll pull A1. Anything else?
I had a quick question about the Sprague.
Okay, so A1 and 2. We will pull those from the adoption of the consent calendar. Any other ones that you need additional? Okay, with that, I would accept a motion for the remainder of the consent calendar, which is for B1 and 2 Personnel Actions, Administrator Personnel Action.
Still moved?
Paul moved.
Second.
Seconded by Chuck. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, same sign. Those are adopted. Paul, you have pulled the grant budget. Your question...
My question was, what are we doing with the grant money? I see it's listed. I didn't know where we were in the process. So Ken?
So...
Or Paula?
Thank you. As the board is aware, we've been very fortunate in receiving an Oregon Minority Educator Pipeline grant, and we do have a very itemized list of expenditures for that grant, proposed expenditures, and I'll have Assistant Superintendent Partial just visit briefly about what's included in that proposal.
Great. Just highlights.
Thank you for the question. It includes two sections of FTE at both high schools, North Salem High School and McKay High School. That will allow us to implement a teacher cadet program as an elective class in both schools. Excuse me. We already have a cadet teacher program at three of our middle schools in town, so this is exciting to add these programs at two of our both diverse schools. A large portion of the funds will go to scholarships for support staff who already have their bachelor's degree and wish to complete a teacher certification program in order to come back to Salem Kaiser as licensed teachers. So the biggest volume is for scholarships for support staff who already work with children, have shown talent, so...
Thanks, Ken.
It's a great investment.
Okay, we'll act on this one, and then we'll move on to the donations. So is there a motion?
Still moved.
Moved by Chuck, seconded by Paul. Any discussion? If not, those in favor of the adoption and appropriation of the grant budget signify by saying aye. Opposed, same sign. Those are adopted and appropriated. The next one, Paul, you had questions on...
The question on this one is, is this donation in trade for their fees?
Ah.
I heard discussion about this, that there was a, some people traded fees for work.
Yeah, Michael Wolff will respond.
Sure. That's, am I on? Yeah.
You're on.
Okay. That's typically not our donation process, to accept requirements and limitations for the use. Donations are just that, and that's what this is. I haven't been involved in any conversations that would lead me to believe otherwise.
Paul, I can tell you from personal experience, it's a great asset to have out in that part, and there are other folks just besides the Sprague baseball and softball teams that are using that. My son's team has used a part of Sprague Little League, so they're allowing other community members access to the facility, and it's a fantastic facility to have out there.
Right, I agree. I just was curious about the, because we had the discussion about...
Other fees usage of, and that'll be a continuing discussion.
I understood, but I just wanted to get that clarified.
Any other questions on accepting the donation of the Hitting Barn Out at Sprague High School? I'll accept a motion.
So moved.
Paul?
Second.
Seconded by Nancy. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor of accepting the donation signify by saying aye. Opposed? We have accepted that donation. Moving on to readings, we have at your packet, or at your place again, there's the memorandum of agreement from the Career Technical Institute, and I believe I'm going to turn this over to Salam for his presentation on this. Is that correct, Superintendent? I know that Director Lee will have a statement to make before he begins his presentation because, as you've noticed, he has stepped down from the dais and will make his conflict of interest statement prior to his presentation, but Salam?
Good evening, Superintendent Radic, Chair Green, members of the board. If I may direct your attention to the board plate before you relative to the memorandum of agreement between the school district and Mountain West CTI. It references the two work sessions that the board had with extensive conversations relative to the details of that agreement, the development of a CTE center, the roles and responsibilities of both parties, that culminated in a memorandum of understanding that you had an opportunity to review and provide feedback and input on for the district. As a result of that, we have a draft memorandum of understanding... As a result of that, we have a draft memorandum of understanding that has been provided to you and without getting into a lot of the technical details in the MOA, we just wanna let you know that we've incorporated most, if not all, of your feedback that you have given us. We've tried to balance this in a manner that affords both the district and Mountain West their needs relative to this project. I can describe the two key sticking points, if you will, for the lack of a better descriptor, that required a lot of conversation between us and Mountain West, Chuck specifically and his partners at Mountain West, and those are the ones that the board expressed interest in. One was the ability to terminate the agreement in the event of a catastrophic financial crisis and also the ability to determine what and how many programs to offer over the course of the five-year agreement. And this is a five-year memorandum of understanding. The first year is planning and the subsequent four years are program years. So I believe we are close conceptually relative to both of those pieces and in our conversations with board members, we proposed language relative to terminating the agreement and also liquidated damages in the event that the board chooses to terminate that agreement. We proposed an amount, a dollar amount, a floor and a ceiling to the board with the understanding that Mountain West was going to counter that offer and Mountain West has and we communicated that to you through the courier. So that remains to be the sticking point, if you will. Conceptually, we all agree that there should be an ability for the district to terminate the program for whatever reasons that the district deems appropriate. We need to agree on the amount that would be prescribed in the event that we do terminate the agreement and that amount has not been resolved yet, so we're still negotiating that. I think on the program, we've had conversations with Chuck and I believe he and his team understand the need for us to be flexible relative to the number of programs that we can offer at any given year. The desire on our part to slow down the number of programs that we choose to offer and the district will be the key entity that determines what program to offer. So I think we're, we have consensus on that. The sticking, the remaining sticking points is still the amount for the liquidated damages and we are continuing to work on that. So Chuck is prepared to address any questions that you may have relative to that and Paul is also prepared to respond to any technical questions, legal questions that you may have relative to the agreement.
I just wanted to, I just wanted to note in your board plate that was mailed out to you, it says that the staff recommends approval of the memorandum of agreement. That's not an action item tonight. This is just first reading. If there are still sticking points and questions, we can schedule a further work session to deal with those issues and have further discussion. This was just to present the memorandum of agreement for first reading. It is scheduled, assuming we can come to terms on what that liquidated damage is, because if you look on page 12 of the contract that was at your seat as you walked in, in paragraph 8.2.4.1, there are still blanks in there, so we are still negotiating that, but if there were technical questions with regard to the first reading of the memorandum, that's what we were going to do tonight. It is not up for approval by the board.
Right, yeah. Thank you for the clarification, Jim. Also, I will add that we plan to bring you, as per your direction, a draft lease and an operations agreement in June, should you be prepared to take action on the MOA in June, so you will see all of those pieces as a packet.
So Salam, did you want us to ask you questions or do you want Chuck to make his presentation or...
Let me defer to Chuck. Would you like to make a statement first, Chuck, or just open it up for questions?
Yeah, I think maybe it might be better if I just say a few words and then...
Okay.
And then both answer questions.
Go ahead, Chuck.
Thank you Chair Person Green and the board and I just would like to remind you and everyone that, again, I'm wearing a separate hat now that I'm moved off of the board and I'm here as an employee of Mountain West and I'm working full-time for them on this project and I will not participate in any vote or any kind of deliberation on this whole topic, but I just wanted to remind you kind of what our dream is. And Larry Takarsky really feels very, very strongly that he would like to make a very generous donation to provide a CTE high school in this community and he's hired me to help him establish that. But our dream is, is that we'd like to, again, as a reminder, pull together a public-private collaboration to provide a high-quality, high-impact educational opportunities for the Salem Kaiser region. We want to have relevant programs that will prepare kids for real-world jobs, prepare them for further education and training, and in many ways, develop a strong workforce for the Salem community that will attract jobs to our community or possibly retain jobs here. But our bottom line is, is we have a dream of providing this for students and so that's been the whole motivation. Where possible, we would like this to align with well-known and available industry certificates so that graduating students can not only receive a graduation certificate, but a work-ready certificate and tested competencies directly tied to the industry standards. And I think in your MOU, you will find a variety of different certificates and things that we would love to see happen and we wanna work together with the district to bring industry to the table and to continue to collaborate on that. To date, I've been hired to work full-time on this project and we've also tried our best to see if there aren't other ways we can help other CTE programs in the district. We've hired a Director of Development to help us raise funds. We've hired an architect who's done an awful lot of work on this project. We've funded appraisals and I think most importantly, and again, I kinda wanna thank the Nielsen family, we have found a facility that I think will just be fantastic for this endeavor. It's well-located in our community on North Portland Road. It's about 160,000 square feet, which is almost the exact same measurements as the CTE school that we were thinking about, including in the bond measure in 2008. It's, right now, we're doing due diligence on it from an environmental standpoint and we're working with the district to find out what kinda educational standards need to be done, so as we remodel this facility, we can have it look like a school. You can see the artist renditions over there. It looks very different from what Nielsen Manufacturing's building looks like right now and we have not finalized, other than a construction and manufacturing strand at the very beginning, but we've also outlined there what ifs, some other programs and things and how they could fit into that facility. So we've done a lot and we've invested a lot so far on this and when we got started on this, we just kind of felt that what we wanted to do was to raise money in this community through generosity of foundations and corporations, get an agreement with the district that for five years, we would work in collaboration with the district to make this happen at some point, turn it completely over to the district and it would be a tremendous contribution from Larry. As you've seen from the MOU, nothing's easy. Welcome to my world. Paul and I've had many discussions and it's just not a, what we were hoping was is that we would just find a creative way for the boards to say, okay, let's just do this for five years, but we have an awful lot of outs, I would say, that the district can use to get out of this agreement at really any point during the five years. And so that's kind of put a different spin on it for us a little bit because, you know, I have to be able to make a recommendation to the donors that they can really live with and basically, you know, we're also talking about equipment and other things, but we're looking at probably an investment from the public part of this public-private, or the private part of this public-private partnership of a little over $6 million just to get this facility up and going for the construction and manufacturing, but that includes the purchase of the property, renovations of the outside of the building, some renovations inside, the equipment and things. And so if we're gonna find a donor to spend $6 million, they're very uncomfortable with the idea that the district could end it a year later. And so that's where Paul came up with the idea, some liquidated damages. And the formula that he has suggested to you that's in the MOU is one that we're not really disputing, but it's one that has to make sense for us to. We don't want liquidated damages. We just want, you know, a facility that the kids use for five years at a dollar a year. I'm fully confident that once we get this thing up and going, it is gonna be just like every other CTE program I've visited in this state and others. There's gonna be waiting lists, there's gonna be a lot of kids clamoring to do it. It's gonna be really, I think, a game changer in this community for a variety of different ways and I, even though we've backed off the quote requirement of two strands a year, I feel that there'll be enough excitement and things. I'm very optimistic about that, especially from the standpoint of industry people that I've talked to who wanna help and wanna get involved. So we've dropped that requirement of, you know, let's do two a year. Some years maybe we'll just do one, some years maybe we'll do three. We haven't decided specifically what all those programs are going to be, but those will be hashed out as we go. So I think that that should, from a financial standpoint, lower the anxiety level for the board a little bit if we're not really committed to that. The formula that Paul's put together is basically, it's in your, it's in your MOU and if, for example, we put $6 million into this facility within the first year to purchase the property, renovate it, do some renovations and equip it and the district decides that after one year that they don't wanna do it, we've got donors who have put $6 million into it and a formula that was suggested earlier that came basically from the district that would just basically, the liquidated damages would be about $600,000. And so for somebody to put $6 million into a project and get about $600,000 back is a tough sell for me to go to a donor and do. And again, we don't like this talking about liquidated damages and things, but at the same time, realistically, we need to kind of look at, you know, that. Our goal is to have this go for five years. So what we've proposed is in the courier and that would be a minimum of $2 million if the district decided to back out. And there's also an option for the district to purchase the facility too and there's formulas in there that you've seen or you can see that illustrate how those formulas would work and how the option of the district getting that facility by purchasing it would be, would be possible during that first five years. Again, our hope is to have this program go for five years and then we'll see what happens after that. There's a lot of options that we would like to entertain. So that's kind of in a nutshell, kinda I think where we are. We're really close. We've worked really hard and I feel like we're just very, very close to making this thing work and we just have these couple of issues still to deal with and at this point, I think I will turn it over to Salam or Paul if there's anything else we want. I'd still hope that somehow we could find some creative way just to get an agreement to operate the facility for five years without going down the line of all the what-ifs. I really feel all the what-ifs, my feeling, are really not very practical as far as reality, but we, I know we have to, we have to cover ourselves and think about that, so. Anyway, Salam?
Thank you Chuck. Paul, do you wanna add anything especially relative to the formula that you crafted for the MOA?
Sure. And first of all, I should just back up a little to say that when we had our last work session, I heard loud and clear that the board, it was very important to the board that it not be forced to produce two new programs every year. And we've talked about this a great deal and I have to hand it to Chuck and his team. They really hurt us and so you see in the agreement that there is certainly the requirement that if the board had financial problems or determined that it didn't want to add two programs a year, maybe one or maybe none in a given year, that we talk about it with our, with our partners, but ultimately, the decision's the board's and Mountain West would agree to abide by that. So really, for most of our concerns about how do we dial back the five-year rollout of these programs, we've addressed that. Now, we have, this is a five-year memorandum of agreement. The first year is just the planning year, so really, we're looking at four years of adding programs and we know that the first two that we want to add, so we only have three more years of programs to add. So I hope that this gives you confidence that, first of all, the number of years is four and the maximum programs that you would need to add, if you could, is eight, two starting and then two over three successive years. And there's nothing that requires the termination of this agreement in the event that the board decides money's a little tight this year, so we're not going to add a program this year, but maybe we'll add three next year. That does not terminate the agreement, but there is a clause in paragraph 8.2 on termination. And this was, the idea was how do we build in a fail-safe so that if the board really does wanna terminate the agreement, not slow down the introduction of programs, but end the agreement, that we give some confidence to Mountain West that there's some consequence to doing that. Why should they invest $6 million, as Chuck said, for the board to terminate the agreement after year two? So we tried to build in a way that this board could legally bind a future board to liquidated damages and I think that this board can bind a future board to a liquidated damages provision. The next trick was how do you calculate the liquidated damages? And so I came up with a formula which is essentially a purchase price plus remodel costs minus fair market value and I have a way to determine fair market value equals liquidated damages. Now, the reality is that because the Nielsen family is very interested in this project, that Mountain West is able to purchase the property probably for less than fair market value. So under my calculation, there's the very real danger that when an appraiser appraises the property on the date of termination, and let's say that's in four years, the fair market value is gonna be much higher than the purchase price plus the remodel costs. So there would be no opportunity for any liquidated damages under that formula and that's likely if we're using a pure fair market value analysis. And so what I, what I did was to think, there needs to be a floor, the minimum amount of liquidated damages if the fair market value is so high that it creates no liquidated damages. And so I picked $500,000. I felt that was a reasonable penalty that represented real money so that you as a board would think twice about terminating the contract and would be a meaningful liquidated damage figure. Now, if the fair market value for some weird reason was to fall below $4 million and there was actually a loss on the property for Mountain West's purchase, then there needed to be a ceiling and I picked the ceiling of $2 million. Why $2 million? Cause it was more than $500,000 and it seemed like a number that's so unlikely to occur, but we needed a number that would give Mountain West confidence that if the real estate market, commercial real estate market fell in a black hole like in 2007, 2008, that there'd be a number out there that we could use. Now with all of this said, the likelihood of using this liquidated damages, as Chuck says, is so remote because think of it, if you're willing to add two programs in the second year and you're not forced to add more programs in the future because of Mountain West's agreement that you can add what you can add, then why, it's hard to conceive of a reason why the board would want to terminate the agreement and be subject to liquidated damages when the board could simply add programs as you could afford them over a period of five years. So I, you know, I'm with Chuck on some of his comments that, number one, we don't want you to have to exercise the liquidated damages provision because we don't want you to terminate the agreement. If you do, there's some financial penalty and what we're, what we're talking about now is the negotiation... over what is the floor and what's the ceiling. Now, the only other aspect of my formula is the liquidated damages have to be to Mountain West, and so I have written out the donations it receives from third persons, and you can see that in 8.2.4. I don't know what to do if somebody donates $5,000 worth of flywheel equipment or whatever it might be. If it's a third-party donation, they're not a party to this contract, I don't know how we want to bind ourselves to third parties that we don't know of yet. So I haven't written in, I have not included donations outside of Mountain West in this calculation. And also keep in mind that the actual entity that's going to receive this, we don't, there's going to be some kind of a 501(c)(3) nonprofit corporation to get the donation, so we have some work to do over who's the owner of the property, et cetera. But that's the basic format.
Okay, Mr. Chair, do you have any questions for us?
Well, we'll find out, Salam. Is there any questions or discussion board members? Chris, then Nancy, then Paul.
I want to just start out by saying I too cannot envision a world where we're going to have to come back to that formula. But I do have to say that in my role as a board member in terms of the fiscal health of this district, I feel it's a very important one because I certainly don't want to see us as a board put the district in a position where in a catastrophic, I think that was the word I heard, catastrophic financial situation, the board is encumbered with yet more outflow of money to solve that. And so I continue to hope that we can come up with some way of dealing with this, and so my question really is a process one. And that is, right now, we're in a first reading and we have dollar sign XXX and dollar sign YYY on there, and obviously, there's going to be some dollar amounts in there next month before anybody asks us to take action on it. How do we proceed from here to there?
Thank you for the question. I think that's part of the negotiation that we have to engage in, and I want to echo what Chuck said, that we really have come a long ways, and we've managed to resolve many difficult technical issues that for any type of agreement would be seen as obstacles. So I think we've worked collaboratively in partnership, and we will continue to get closer to a number that everybody's comfortable with. I can't tell you what that number is now.
So you folks will continue to negotiate?
Yes.
And you will continue to have board leadership bounce those kinds of numbers off of us to see how we're feeling about them? Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes, absolutely. That's one avenue to do it. If the board wishes to have another work session, as Jim mentioned earlier, that we're welcome, we're amenable to that. But our intention is to negotiate and then communicate with you through board leadership, yes.
Nancy, and then Paul.
I just want to say how much I appreciate that you listened about the rigidness of the two programs a year, and that if we didn't add those two programs a year, that it would be deemed a failure. It was really important to me that there was some sense that if we have kids who are learning there, and maybe not as many as we dreamed to have, that it would still be a success. So I really appreciate that you listened to that and appreciate that there's been that softening.
Thank you Nancy, and I'd just like to just reiterate that if we don't do two years, if we don't do two programs a year, the district and the kids are the ones that are going to be losing out because those are financial resources that after five years, maybe the district would have to assume if we don't get them done in the first five years. So I think that that's, we wanted to kind of finesse that a little bit, and that was part of it. But clearly, our hope is to have that building full and operational with 1,000 kids attending at the end. And it may take six years, it may take seven, it may take three depending on, you know, kind of a variety of different things that may happen. Our hope is it takes three, but...
Paul?
I too appreciate all the changes that I saw from the last document, but my concerns are still hanging here. Do you have the document in front of you?
Yes.
Okay. As I was scanning through this, having just received it, I was very happy to see in 2.5 the concept that Salem Kaiser School District will come up with a master plan, and the last phrase of the last sentence, SKSD has the final decision-making authority, and MWCTI agrees to abide by SKSD's final decision. I was very glad to see that we had not given up control of the program until I read Section 4, where I look, the agreement starts July 1, 2014, and then I read 4.1.1.3 and 4.1.1.4, where the parties failed to develop mutually satisfactory. So again, we don't have control, but it's a mutual control. So who's in charge of the program? Are we?
The intention, yeah, excuse me, the intention is that the district is in charge of the program. We have a collaborative partnership with Mountain West CTI, and whatever advisory committees will be established will help inform that, but ultimately, the district is in charge of determining the program, the scope of the program, and the program offerings. So we can look at modifying whatever language you suggest, Paul, to reflect that, so.
I think too, I think that that whole section, Paul, is kind of decide as a variety of different things that have to happen to open the program.
Let me get to my next question about things that have to happen. As I look at this, if we go to Section 5.4.5 and 5.5.1 and 5.5.2, it appears to me that we have to have a work session soon to come up with what it says, that we have approved a plan to fund the operation of the CTE program for five years. We have to come up with, commit the necessary resources to plan for the CTE program during 14, 15 school year, and operate the CTE, and operate the CTE program and facility for four school years, and we have to outline a budget to plan for and staff the CTE program. And it looks to me like we have major financial responsibilities, starting right away, that have nothing to do with what Paul and everyone else was talking about earlier in terms of the facility. Help me understand.
Okay. I may need you to help me understand exactly what your question is.
It looks to me like we're committing funds before July 1, because earlier in the document it says upon signing this, which
Right.
And takes effect July 1.
Right, right.
That we now have to be committing to the budget and committing the funding for this program and this building before July 1. That means this budget cycle, that means, will we see a presentation next Monday or Tuesday?
So, thank you for the clarification, and this is language that, as you can see, is interdependent. So Section 4 is dependent on Section 5, Section 5 has component that's related to Section 8. So instead of trying to parse it out in great details, let me just conceptually say that if the board approves this memorandum of agreement, we have to move forward with the development of a five-year plan. We shared with you information relative to what that potentially could look like, the number of programs, the staffing that's required for it, the equipment cost, the facility renovation cost. This MOU spells out the responsibilities of each party. So Mountain West will be responsible for the purchase of the facility, the renovation of the facility. We have to start our planning process, and the board would delegate that to us because that becomes an operational function to develop a master plan to budget for it. I also want to remind the board that in the superintendent's proposed budget, the amount of funding required for the first year for the planning purposes has been included in the 14, 15 budget. So we would present a plan with extensive details relative to facility, program startup cost, staffing, furnishings, et cetera, but that becomes an operational function once the board approves the MOA and directs us to proceed in implementing the program.
I understand that, but it still looks to me that 5.4.5 and 5.5.2 require us to budget for the programs now, or to make commitments to the programs now. So for the future, I mean, because these are in expectations, this is not in termination, this is in expectation.
Right.
That Mountain West has an expectation of us to do this.
I think, and we can clarify that in memorandum of agreement legal language, I think the expectation is that the district commits to operating this program based on a five-year agreement. The planning, the fiscal planning for it and the programmatic planning needs to happen in two ways. Our budget is approved annually, so we're not going to set aside money for five years. So on an annual basis, we'll include in the superintendent's proposed budget funds for the operating of that program for that upcoming year. So I think there are some conceptual, some language perhaps that needs to be clarified. I don't think we're asking the board to set aside five years' worth of funding to support the program, but in principle, you're agreeing to support the program for the duration of five years, and we come to you with plans on how to fund it in our annual budget.
So we're committing to this over music or anything else?
No, I don't think that's, I, yeah, I'm not sure I understand exactly what's...
My question is, can we not fund this in a future budget in three years?
Absolutely, and that's where the termination clause comes into effect. So you could choose to not fund this six months from now. You could change your mind. You could choose to fund that two years after we started up, and the termination clause kicks into effect, and that's designed to protect Mountain West's investment in this project.
Salam, if I may, and Paul, maybe in 5.4.5, the wording is incorrect in that we've approved a plan, but maybe that we reviewed a plan that would fund it for five years because we did see a fiscal plan that laid it out for about a five-year program. So maybe it's just the verbiage that's in that particular paragraph that causes some consternation, and I understand that.
Yeah, I think too, hopefully in the next month, you're going to see a lease agreement and an operational agreement too, which will perhaps deal with some of those.
Yeah, yeah. If I may just add one more thing, this was initially crafted over three phases, perhaps that's what Paul was going to share. And so we've had to modify it into a single phase, so to speak, and that's why some of the language is still implies that you've done something that you haven't already done. So we can clean that up, that's not a problem.
Paul, did you have anything else?
That's it.
Rick, did you have anything?
Yeah, I think some great work has gone into the agreement, and this is certainly a great project, but I still am hung up on, is this the right time for us? We're coming out of 140-plus million dollars of cuts. We have our first positive year. I know we're not committing that much this year if we vote yes towards this project, but over five years, we're committing 10 million plus to the project. I have a hard time doing that when we've got a lot of infrastructure issues where we haven't been spending money. So I'm thinking more about the big picture and whether this project, timing-wise, is where we need to go right now.
Okay. Chris, and then Nancy.
I just wanted to speak, because the answer didn't come back the way I sort of expected it to Paul's questions, and it seems to me that under this agreement, that what we're going to see is a five-year plan that describes if we were to add two programs a year, this is what it would look like, and that would end up to be a $10 million kind of investment over five years. But the plan is now written so that if we choose not to do two plans more every year, that that $10 million could be reduced quite a bit simply by not starting more programs if we hit financial problems. But I want to come back, my statement actually is about, it just seems to me, and I've said this before in front of all you, and I'll say it again now in a public setting, and that is that if we in fact expect our students in Salem Kaiser to hit any kind of a 40-40-20 goal, there is no way we're going to do that without finding some way for that middle 40, that, after the 20% who graduate, the 40% who get technical training or an associate's degree, those are the folks that this kind of a program is going to speak to. And without a program such as this, we're just simply not going to make much of a headway towards that middle 40%. So I keep coming back to, as we start to reinvest, as there's more money to reinvest, we probably are not going to spend it on exactly what we cut when we cut that 140 million dollars. And this kind of a program is the kind of thing that we need to be thinking about investing in in order to meet the kinds of goals the state has set for us. So I would come back and just say, I'm not as concerned about it simply because, A, I don't think we have to do the whole thing, given the way it's now written, and B, if we have to reinvest, it may be in something different than we cut. And this might be the thing that we really think is important to do it in. So I, and I continue to be in complete support of that statement, that I think we ought to be investing in this kind of stuff.
Nancy?
I would just ask that if we're going to get a lease agreement and an operational agreement, that we have it before we walk in the boardroom, because I can't process this that quickly while we're having a conversation.
Rick?
Actually, Chris, on that discussion point, I'm not as learned or as read as you are in this area, but to get to 40-40-20, it might be more important to focus on the kindergartners right now and getting them into all-day school, so they're all reading by third grade, which we all know they'll be successful at that point. So I don't see us getting very well-prepared for all-day kindergarten. So that's the way, that's the direction I would point.
So what I'm hearing from board members, I'm looking at Paul and I'm looking at Salam, is they'd like to see the lease agreement and if there's an operational agreement, and if need be, we can come back with a work session to take a look at this again. And Chuck, as you talked to Mr. Takarsky, I mean, one, you know, obviously, we're very excited about the opportunity for a gift of this nature, but what you're hearing is a discussion among the fiduciary responsibility of board members here to assure that what we do for all the kids in the school district makes sense, and I know he'd like to have this move faster. And I understand that in the private business sector, things move very fast. I practiced in that area, and I understand that. But we need to do our due diligence as school board members to assure that, one, we protect the assets and the taxpayers' dollars with regard to this, and we do want to work with Mr. Takarsky. I think that's been the gesture from this board, is that we want to continue moving forward. It's just dotting the i's and crossing the t's, and we pay the Garrett-Heman Law Firm a large sum of money to ask the what-if questions. And I am trained as a lawyer, and that's what they teach you to ask in law school, are those what-if issues. But I think there's been a lot of really good work put into this. I think Mountain West has come a long way on where they were originally at to where we are today, and I appreciate that. And I do appreciate the gift that Mr. Takarsky wants to make on behalf of this school district. And I would just encourage the parties to continue the discussion. The verbiage in part of this may be problematic right now because I think the idea, as Salam presented it and as you presented, Chuck, was the district has control over these things. It's that if they want out, then there must be damages paid to that. And I think that's where we've all been, and it may not read perfectly right now with some of the issues that Paul brought up. Now, whether board members have concerns over whether this is the right way to spend money, that's a different discussion than the agreement that's before us today. So, Chris?
I just wanted to offer that I think Rick's and my discussion is something that we really need to be thinking about over the next year probably, is spending some time as a board, starting to put some prioritizations together as we start to add back money and where we think that's important to be doing that.
But I just want to make sure everybody understands, we do, we have moved forward with this. We're very appreciative of what Mountain West and Larry wants to do on behalf of the school district and the kids in the school district. Whether in fact, board members vote to approve it because they believe it's the right thing to do or there ought to be a different way to have that, that's a different discussion when we move to approve something like this. But I think you've got some marching orders, Paul, to work on the formula, the liquidated damages amount. I understand that there's some further negotiations going on with that, and maybe changing some of the language in 5.4.5 or 5.4.1 that gets at the issue that Paul brought up, which I think everybody has a meeting of the minds around, is that the district has the authority, it's how we get there ultimately.
And I would just like to kind of reiterate what I said earlier, that, you know, Larry's looking at this as a gift, and, you know, if you're talking about an asset for the district, this thing could be worth $12 million at the end of the day, and he's willing to step up. But we've gone through a lot of MOAs, and this thing has started from, you know, let's just have an agreement and a handshake and do it, and that won't work evidently. And so, you know, for him to invest over $6 million in the first year or two of this project and only have $500,000 as the risk, it's going to be very difficult for me to recommend to him to do that. So I wanted to make sure, I said that during the, you know, my little presentation and things, but that's the other reality of the situation too, so. So.
Any further questions, discussion board members?
If not, thank you, Salam.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Paul. Next, we're doing another first reading on the school attendance area boundary changes in East Salem, and I think this goes to our chief operations officer, but I'll turn it over to Superintendent Radich.
As the board is aware, Michael Wolf and Merrick Reiter have been working with parents in the East Salem boundary area, and Michael is prepared this evening to give the board an update and a first reading.
And I will remind board members at your place, as you walked in, was the color map, so that you could see this a little bit differently rather than in the black and white, which I think caused some concern when you're looking at a map of this size, so I appreciate that, Mike.
Good evening, Superintendent Radich, Chair Green, members of the board. Tonight, for a first reading, we have a proposal to change the boundary attendance areas in East Salem, and our recommendation would adjust the current attendance areas for three schools. That's Chavez Elementary, Swiegel, and Scott. And the reason that we're doing this is because we are experiencing significant overcrowding issues at Chavez Elementary School. And so in the fall of 2013, the district formed the study team as a normal process when we take a look at potential boundary changes and issues, to look at the overcrowding situation at Chavez. We studied, as is our practice, enrollment trends in the attendance areas of not just Swiegel, Scott, and Chavez, but also Lamb and Washington Elementary. We look at future, existing and future school capacities, and we're also very mindful of the potential for full-day kinder in the not-too-distant future. All of these were considered, and we developed multiple scenarios to address the issue, and we came up with our proposal for a boundary change that we'll go over here in a little more detail, and we presented that to the three affected school communities in a meeting in January of 2014. And we were on a process timeline of presenting the proposal in January, gathering feedback if we needed to modify or not, close the loop in February, move to a first reading in March, and then a decision in April by the board. This was following, as you're aware, the West Salem boundary changes, and so we wanted to stagger those two processes a bit. Again, at the first meeting in January, after the proposal, we went over in great detail and received feedback and comments, and we went back and as staff and assessed all of that, and we didn't receive any feedback that we felt would cause us to change our recommendation. And so we held another community meeting in February, had a larger attendance at that meeting, and during the meeting, there was a significant amount of feedback from the community members, the parents, as to what they believed was the potential cause for overcrowding at Chavez. And many parents believed that the primary reason for overcrowding was due to students attending Chavez that actually lived outside of the boundary area. And so there was so much of a consensus about that, that it caused us as staff to postpone the timeline that I just described to you, and to give ourselves some time to actually look into some of the concerns that were raised. And so we took a look at our student registration process and practices throughout the district, not just focused on Chavez, but also clearly, we looked at what was happening at Chavez. We also spent some time over about a two-month period observing different bus stops throughout the district, but primarily in the northeast corridor, drop-off and pickup locations, and we also looked at our rider registration process for transportation, and we do not have rider registration throughout the district. It's a very labor-intensive and costly proposition, but we do have certain schools that we've been piloting for a while, and Chavez is one of them. And so if this was a concern raised by parents, then we took a look at the rider registration process that we have already operating at Chavez. And then we could not find any conclusive data that would warrant a modification to the boundary change process. We just didn't notice what was raised by the parents. And again, we spent over two months, about two and a half months, taking a look at process procedures, making observations and such. And so we had a final meeting in April at Chavez to share the information with the parents that attended. And so tonight, you have our proposal. We decided, again, that there wasn't any conclusive information that would change our original proposal from what we had presented back in January. And so what I'd like to go over that with you briefly, and basically what we're doing, and I will point to that map. So again, we have our color coding, and we also have the nomenclature for the specific planning parcels. So on this map, you have Swiegel, which is located here, which is the, I guess I would call that flesh, peach?
Salmon.
Salmon, thank you. The salmon color. We have Chavez, which is blue, which also extends here, which in large part was the old Middle Grove attendance area. And then we have Lamb to the north, and of course, we have Washington over here and Hoover down in this area. So our proposal is to shift approximately 170 students in these parcels. This one would move, there's approximately 59 students would now attend Scott Elementary. And in this parcel, we've got about 111 students that would now become part of the Swiegel attendance area. We believe that this will give us the needed relief at Chavez, and also, even though this doesn't impact nearly as many students or families as the West Salem boundary change, we realize that any change is difficult, and so we do know that our proposal is affecting about 170 students and their families. We believe that it'll give us a more balanced, long-term attendance area for all three schools. We also realize that we'll be looking at full-day kinder, and hopefully, we'll continue to look at lowering class size over time, if that's part of the district's sense of priorities. And so we want to make sure, though, that it's clear that in this dotted line, I'm jumping from elementary to middle school, we haven't changed the boundaries between Stevens and Waldo, but what we have done is we've shifted this parcel of students that now will move to Scott. They will still attend Stevens. So while we didn't change the middle school boundaries, we are changing the attendance area where Scott will have a parcel of its population that will attend Stevens. Okay?
And why did you do that?
Well, partly, we have a balance, because these students attend Stevens now, and so they will continue to attend Stevens Middle School. And we have a balance between Waldo and Stevens that we didn't want to disrupt by making a middle school boundary change as part of this. We have this situation in several of our elementary schools throughout the district. Okay? Yes?
All right. Do you have more to go? Or do you want to take questions now, Mike?
Why don't you let me go through the rest of the board plate, and then we'll come back, if that's okay?
Yep.
And we also wanted to make sure that we're very sensitive to extending the continuity exemption like we have done and offered to the families in West Salem. So again, this is applicable only to this boundary change, just as the one in West Salem was applicable to that boundary change. We're not suggesting that we change our continuity exemption process. We're willing to make an exception to that for this boundary change. And again, it would be essentially, if you're a student in good standing and you're currently attending Chavez kindergarten through fourth, that you would be able, through an IDT process, to have an approved continuity exemption, to stay at Chavez, you would have to provide your own transportation, just as we had offered in West Salem. We also offer that if you have a kindergartner at Chavez enrolled currently, and you also have a sibling that will be entering kindergarten next year, they too are covered by this continuity exemption, exactly like the West Salem process. Now, we handled this through the IDT process, but we also realize that the normal IDT window application process has closed. So obviously, we will make an exception for these families. We'll reach out to them to make sure the process is understood and the necessary paperwork is submitted for the fall of '14. So again, this is our recommendation, it's for first reading, and we will bring this back to the board to take action at its June 10 meeting next month. Questions?
Thanks, Mike.
Questions? Nancy?
So I would just hope that the district would stay in contact with those families. If you have 59 kids in that area and that are elementary kids, that's maybe 10 kids a year-ish. So you're taking 10 kids out of all of Scott and sending them off to middle school alone seems not very kind, so, and not making a huge difference in terms of attendance at the two middle schools when it's that few kids.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
And I just hope that there would be conversation with those families to see whether that's, I mean, it, middle, grade school to middle school is already a very difficult transition. So...
Yeah. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Mike, thank you.
Sure.
Thanks for taking the time to do the community outreach and working with those parents and folks out there, too.
Absolutely.
Okay. Board members, we're on to agenda item number six, reports. These are monitoring reports on executive limitations. Dr. Radich.
Thank you. So we must be getting close to the end of the year, because we're at Executive Limitation Report 11 of 12. This is a fairly lengthy report, so there are several criteria regarding this executive limitation. I'm only going to address Criteria 1. I think it's probably the most significant of the criteria, and then certainly would be happy to respond to any questions the board may have relative to the other criteria. Criteria 1 involves the implementation of academic standards, aligning the curriculum to enable students to meet those standards, and then developing assessments to adequately measure student progress toward achieving the standards. So as the board is aware, not unlike districts across the state of Oregon, Salem Kaiser has been fully transitioning to the Common Core state standards this school year. We've implemented the Common Core standards in both English Language Arts and Mathematics. The new and, I think, exciting standards that are coming out currently are the next-generation state science standards, and those will replace the current Oregon science standards and will be implemented statewide, but not until 2016-17. Social studies, the revised content standards in 2011 are fully implemented, grade 612, and work has begun regarding supporting implementation in K3. Regarding the assessment practices, the district currently administers district-wide interim assessments twice annually, and then many of our teachers through the professional learning community teams are also constructing formative assessments as a way to check student progress toward meeting the standards throughout the year. So the major work that's particularly this year and next year will involve aligning all those formative assessments with the new Common Core standards, and much of that work has already been in process. And thanks to the work of Sue Ricky Smith and her team at Instructional Services, there have been a number of professional development opportunities that our staff have been privileged to be involved in. One of those was in August of 2013, where there was a rollout of some of the new Common Core standards and helping teachers understand the rigor and the expectation of those standards. Next year's professional development at all levels will focus on a deeper implementation of the Common Core standards as these relate to the new smarter-balanced assessment. The smarter-balanced assessment, as the board is aware, is replacing the current Oaks assessment, so it'll be a very interesting time in the state of Oregon. Early reports out of the pilot districts for the smarter-balanced assessment indicate that the scores are likely to be lower, simply because implementation of the Common Core is just beginning. Also, through a strategic initiative grant, the Salem Kaiser's teachers will have two opportunities this summer to participate in a differentiated professional development plan. Again, thanks to Sue Ricky Smith and her team, there will be two summits, academic summits available this summer, one in June and one in August, where teachers can begin to do additional work on the Common Core standards, and also take a look at the new instructional materials and how those are aligned with the standards. Kind of anecdotally, for the board's interest, there was so much interest in these courses and teachers signing up, that we crashed the system. And I was saying to Sue, that is a very happy problem to have, when you have that number of educators who are thirsty and eager and interested in taking professional development this summer. So that concludes my comments on Criteria 1. I'm happy to respond to any questions the board might have relative to this report.
Chris.
Is there going to be a smarter-balanced science test in 1617?
No.
How are we going to assess whether our students are learning next-generation science standards?
I'll have Salam now respond to the science.
I think, I think the plan right now is to continue to use the Oregon assessment, Oaks for Science. Eventually, at the national level, we may see a consortium assessment developed, but funding would need to be allocated for that, because a significant amount of dollars was allocated to the SBAK and the Park consortiums to develop the two national assessments that districts have an option to use for Common Core. We're hoping that there will be resources available to develop a test for next-generation science standards, but for the time being, it's going to be Oaks, sorry.
Sorry, Salam, and I think because those next-generation standards aren't even due for implementation till 2016-17, it would probably be premature to use a different assessment until we've had at least some implementation time.
Yeah, it just strikes me as odd that we're going to switch to a new set of standards and then still test over the old ones. Doesn't make a whole lot of sense somehow.
And that's kind of where we are now.
Yeah.
You're going to see, I think, a dip in assessment scores, probably statewide this year. This current Oaks assessment in the state of Oregon is measuring the old standards, but most districts, to get ready for the Common Core, have actually begun implementing the Common Core standards, so there's not complete alignment between Common Core and Oaks. So we're going to have some test scores, I think statewide, that are going to be low or lower than they've been, and that's a misalignment, and it's going to be very difficult to explain to our communities statewide why that is. But the major reason is, we're shifting into these new standards, and currently this year, we're testing the new standards with an old test. And then next year, we'll have the new test for the new standards, but it'll be a very difficult test, and something very new for all of our students. It'll be a challenging time.
Further comments or questions? We don't vote on these board members, but what we do is reach consensus, so I'd look for a thumbs up from everybody up and down. I see that. Okay. Our next report is on the strategic plan. Superintendent Radich.
Yes, thank you. Jay Remy is going to make the presentation. I believe he has a few slides.
No, I don't have any slides.
Oh, okay.
Because, well, it's a work in progress.
All right.
We've got, we're getting this close to having some really cool stuff to show you online, so the next time I come back, I'll have publications, I'll have stuff online, and we'll be clicking through a few things on the internet to show you. The goal for this month is number nine, which is implement a plan and tools to help schools communicate more effectively with parents and key community partners regarding instruction and student achievement. And as I think I told you last year, we were doing the research phase, was we were trying to find out what people need to know and what our own educators would like people to know in the community of parents and non-parents about these topics, about student achievement. And what we found was that parents overwhelmingly wanted to know these four questions that are in the board plate. What is my child learning, or what are they supposed to learn? And we had a number of administrators say, yeah, it would be very helpful letting them know that we have standards, where those standards come from, the fact that every school doesn't just make up their own standards. And so that was one question. Another question, how is my child doing in school right now? And they, they... And they want to keep track of how their child is doing at any given point in the year, and so, that's a challenge. How can I help at home? That's a great question that any of us who have students, we always want to know, well, what is the point of this particular homework assignment and what am I supposed to be doing as a parent to support this? And then finally, what does it take to graduate? And of course, that is one that people...we found out in our research that a lot of parents start worrying about that way too late. They'll come in, in the middle of high school or towards the end of high school, and say, what do I really need to do to help my child graduate? And what we heard was, middle school is not even too early. Elementary school is not too early to start lining out to parents and to students what they need to do in order to graduate and have a successful life. So, we went out looking, and I'm glad Karma's still here. She's done, really, the lion's share of this work, but she's done a lot of work with our curriculum people, with our teachers, our counselors, administrators, and found out what we already knew, what you can find out from a simple Google search. There are oceans and oceans of material out there on standards and oceans of material on good parenting and what you can do to support your kids. So, our challenge was to kind of try to sort through, sift through with expert help because we're not the curriculum experts and we're not the experts on the standards. So Karma has been really leading the work to work with those experts in our district and kind of winnow through these oceans and oceans of material to get down to some good resources for parents. And then I think after we get the parent part going, we'll expand a little bit more and probably have some more special communications for other community members. So, what we're going to end up with, at this point, we're going to have the Parents' Guide to Graduation, which will be...I spoke about that donation that we got earlier from Service Master. We've got a big donation from MAPS as well, and they're going to help us publish. There will be a four-page handout specifically for every single grade, K through 12. So, on this one, this is just a mock-up, but it says, hello, parents, welcome to kindergarten. Your student is taking their first step toward high school graduation. And so, there's some great introductory stuff about how important it is for your student to be on grade level and meeting standards, starting in kindergarten and going all the way through. So, then on the inside, it'll say, what is my child learning? And there will be a few standards for English Language Arts, a few for math, a few for science, and Karma likes to remind people, it's like Baskin and Robbins where they have a little pink spoon to give you a sample if you want it. That's what level this is, is to take a sample. And then, the package, part of the package will be web links in here that say, if you want to go deeper in the, say, the Language Arts standards for your kindergartner, go to this link online, and you can go deeper and deeper. In addition to just more and more of the standards, there will be some other things there, too. For instance, the district already has some really neat stuff that would include, say, for grade one, everyday activities you can do at home with your first grader to help them in learning these vocabulary words, things like that. So, the goal is to try to make it accessible, user-friendly, not overwhelming, and not just direct people out there to an overwhelming number of resources. So, like I say, the next time we present on this, I think we'll have some color publications, we'll have online, there will be a video component as well online. And so, the great thing is that when we get the website up, it'll be a manual for graduation for every single grade all the way through. And of course, we'll have to update them year by year to make sure if standards change or different resources come online. But we're hoping that ultimately, we will, if we have continued support from our donors, we'll be able to continue this for years and years and refine it, modify it as we go. And we're hoping it'll be something that's well-known among parents. That'll be part of our strategy will be to go ahead and advertise it to parents and make sure that it gets into everybody's hands. The first year, we know we have the funding to do that, to literally put a color brochure in everybody's hand by grade level for their kid. And then we hope that the demand will grow from there and we'll continue to get donor support and be able to do that year by year.
Will it be available in different languages?
Yes. After we get it set, then we'll go ahead and translate it.
And will the high school one have pathways to after-high school planning as well?
Yeah, come on in. This is Karma Kraus. She works in the Communications Office.
Good evening. Good evening, Chair Green, Superintendent Radich, and members of the board. Yes, we're keeping the information in those four big buckets that the parents told us are their greatest areas of interest. And when it comes to the high school graduation requirements, yes, we're going to point to a dedicated mini-website that we'll also keep with those four buckets, but there will be a lot of other information on there about, you know, what you can do to get ready for college and what comes next. So, tips for kids going on after high school as well.
Right. Thanks.
Sure.
Chris?
My question has to do with the language that you're using as you do this. I was in a number of classrooms as we went through the superintendent search, and I saw the learning objectives on the wall, and it struck me a number of times that those learning objectives use some academic language that's fairly sophisticated, and the kids understand it because the teachers have led them there. But if you were to put that same language in a publication for parents, they may not have a clue what it means, and I'm wondering how you're dealing with that problem.
Right. We've tried to look at them definitely from the parent's perspective and to say, how would a parent understand this and how can we make the language a little easier for parents to digest? And one tool we used was something called readabilityscore.com, whereas as we look at some of the standards and the content that we're writing in this brochure, we'll put it through this website sort of filter that tells us sort of a grade level, what, you know, where does this fall in complexity of the language? And we've tried to peg it, you know, at a reasonable level so that it takes out some of that jargon.
And one of our challenges has been to find language that's not insulting to people who enjoy the jargon or who understand it, because we're trying to provide warnings. And one of the things that we've worked on a lot is trying to get that kind of a warning for parents, not to scare them off, but say, if you want to dive farther and farther into the actual standards, you're going to find some very technical language that's written for practitioners and people with a great deal of technical knowledge. So, be prepared as you go in there. That's what you're getting into, not just more and more layers of easy-to-understand stuff. But we want to do that in a way that doesn't scare them off. If they want to try, go for it.
Further comments?
Great work.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jay.
Thanks, Karma.
Thanks, Karma.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda is a informational report on our Achievement Compact. Superintendent Radich.
Thank you. The Oregon Education Investment Board, a few years ago mandated that achievement compacts be developed by school districts. And this evening, Assistant Superintendent Knorr is going to just give you an update relative to where we are with our Achievement Compact and the work that he's been doing with the Oversight Committee.
And again, board members, I ought to remind you, at your place when you came in was a colorized version of the Achievement Compact, which is probably a little easier to read than the grayscale that was in the nailed-out board plate. Salam.
Thank you, Superintendent Radich, Chair Green. Just by way of background, I just want to remind the board that PACE, our committee that meets on a monthly basis, has been designated by the board as the Achievement Compact Advisory Committee. This is a requirement in the law. We're also required to provide a report to the board in May of the school year relative to our progress on the Achievement Compact. This is really more of a procedural report. We're trying to comply with the law because we haven't made any changes to this Achievement Compact that's in front of you. This is what we submitted in October to the state. We received a letter acknowledging receipt of the Achievement Compact, but no direction from the state relative to its content, objectives, et cetera. The state is undergoing through a process to determine the purpose of the achievement, to reexamine, let's say, the purpose of the Achievement Compacts and future directions, and they provided a report to that effect. So, my report to you this evening basically is to let you know that we've met twice, the committee has met twice, they looked at the data that we submitted to the state, we have not made any modifications to it at this time because we don't have this year's data, and you have to have this year's data in order to set goals for next year. What we discussed, however, was the formula or the methodology that we want to use to set goals, and we all agreed that we want to continue to use the same methodology that we used for the 13-14 Achievement Compact. And just for your information, that is a percentage of the non-met percent, if you will, and I'll give you an example. So, if 65% of our students meet the reading requirement in third grade, 35% did not meet. So, our goal for next year will be 10% of the 35%, which is 3.5%. And that is a fairly ambitious goal. So, we talked about the possibility of adjusting that, and we decided to stick with it because it's consistent, it's what everybody else in the state, or most everyone in the state, uses. So, I just wanted to report to you that we've agreed to continue to use the same methodology. We will revisit this again in September when the group convenes for PACE and possibly in October, if we have a meeting before the 15th of October when it's due. So, our intention is to continue to work on it, to look at the data, to examine the targets that we've established for ourselves, to make sure that they are ambitious, that they are big ambitious targets, because we want our students to achieve at a very high level. So, that is my report to you. We meet our requirement for the state, but it's something that we take very seriously, and it's something that's very much aligned to the strategic plan, to the board's results, policy, and the budget, I would say. Okay?
Questions? Again, this will come back for our approval in the fall, is that correct?
Yes, most likely we will submit it to you for first reading in September and second reading and adoption in October, so we can submit it to the state by October 15th. And we're trying to kind of work out the logistics of that because PACE does not meet over the summer. We have to schedule a September meeting to go over the data and try and meet the timeline for board approval as well.
But at least we've moved the submission date so that we can actually have the data from the Department of Ed before we have to approve an achievement.
Absolutely, and we're very happy about that. Thank you.
Any other comments? Thank you, Salam.
Thank you.
Board members, in your packet is information regarding upcoming board meetings and Budget Committee meetings. You'll note that on the 19th and 20th, at least minimally, we have Budget Committee hearings. I probably won't be at the 20th one because I'm supposed to be at the Eagle Feather Celebration for our Native American students at South Salem. I signed up to do that. There will also be, at your place is a packet, an expulsion packet. We've been asked to move an expulsion consideration by the board up, and we'll do that in an executive session on May 19th. Just make sure you've got that on your agenda, that we will have an executive session on May 19th. I don't have anybody signed up for audience communications on non-agenda items, not seeing anybody coming forward. Board reports on activities. Board members. Nancy?
Well, several of us went to the Turnaround Awards today, which are always just an amazing event where student after student tells the story of how they turned it around from being underachievers or being troublemakers or whatever to being focused and, you know, pulling their GPAs from the ones to the high threes or fours, behavior turnarounds, leadership. I mean, it's just an impossible event to not shed a tear or two. There was a wonderful video made by Aaron Harada that would be great to show to the whole board at some point for those that didn't get to see it about those kids. Also, briefly, I met with, there was a group of Japanese educators who came to visit the district, and this is the 14th country that they have visited. Not this particular group, but the professor picks a country and visits it every year, and they were in Salem-Kaiser. And an opportunity to meet with them and try to explain what the school board does. And in Japan, school board members get paid, so in case you want to move over to Japan, it's a little better deal there. Something they said to me that was really impressive, made me very proud of this district, they said that in most, in all countries that they've visited, they are shown the shiniest, neatest, high-flyingest schools in the areas that they visit, the newest schools, the brightest kids, all of that. And that in this district, they were shown a variety of schools around our district, and we're very impressed with the work going on in them, and probably weren't shown our spiffiest schools. So, I think that we can all be proud of that.
Chuck?
To follow up on what Nancy was saying about the Turnaround Awards, I was struck, first of all, by the kids. I mean, they were incredible and wonderful stories. But each one of them seemed to have a connection with a Salem-Kaiser adult security person, somebody connected with the district that really made a big difference to help them turn it around. It wasn't something that they did on their own, but there was a teacher, a counselor, a principal, somebody in their life from the district that really helped them turn around, and I was struck by that. And just when the faculty members or whatever got up to speak about the students, just the sense of pride that they had and the obvious affection that they had for those students, you know, just says an awful lot. So, I, you know, I just wanted to follow up on that. I also had the opportunity to attend the Leadership Youth graduation. The Salem Chamber of Commerce does an excellent job with leadership youth. It's a great opportunity to build leadership skills with our high school students. And the second year of that program, they serve on a board, and many of them serve on boards that are related to the school district. But it's just a great opportunity that so many of our kids have, and it's well-done by the Chamber, and they had their graduation about two or three weeks ago. Finally, I really want to congratulate the Executive Director of the SCAF.
Yeah, you'd better.
The Awesome 3000 was awesome, and, you know, the weather kind of held on, but I saw many board members there, but I'm always amazed at how well-organized that event is. You have 3,500 kids and you don't lose any. That just says an awful lot. And then the next day was Lemonade Day, and we had lemonade stands set up all over our city that SCAF was very involved with. So, busy weekend for the Executive Director and her organization, so job well done.
Chris?
I just parrot the Awesome 3000 as a few of you here helped out with that. I just, it's one of the highlights of my year. I just thoroughly enjoy being at the finish line at that thing and watching those kids come across with their faces that look like they've just run 3,000 meters and then by the end of the finish line, shoot, are smiling again and ready to get their medal and go on about life. And it's just a wonderful day, and the fact that it actually makes money for our after-school programs and our teacher grants and all the other things that we do in this district is just gravy on the mashed potatoes. So, that was the only thing that I could say, other than a parrot. Turnaround achievement, to me, is one of those days when you look at kids who...the only word I keep coming up with is resilient. They're just, they just seem to be beaten down and beaten...there were kids there that had lives that you just can't believe the kinds of things that they've rebounded from and are turning it around and graduating from high school and talking about college. And I just want to mention Ronnie Brooks's presentation again today. Ronnie is a part...is he part-time at McKay? I think he's part-time at McKay, but he...
Full-time.
Is he full-time?
Mm-hmm.
And he...but he's also a pastor, and you get this guy who's got those speaking skills of being a pastor, getting up there, giving an inspiring presentation to kids in a more secular setting, and he just does it with aplomb, and I just always am glad when he shows up to do it. And he did a fine job again today.
Amazing.
Chuck, you had one more?
Yeah, and I think we'd be remiss if we didn't mention Don Lebold and his wife, the great job that they do. That's 20 years they have organized that event. They started it 20 years ago. They own Town and Country Bowling Alley in Kaiser, and in fact, they live in Kaiser, too. And but Don today was talking about the great support he gets from the school district, and all he has to do is write a check. Well, I tell you, he's doing an awful lot more than just writing a check. That's just, as has been mentioned, it's an outstanding day, but good for Don and his wife for pulling that off every year and writing that check. It's a lot of people there.
And it takes place in Kaiser?
Yes, it does. Kaiser City Hall, and they donate the space to...
They donate the space?
Yes.
Anyone else? Anyone else? I'll, I'll wrap up. I'd like to say thanks to Karina and the Salem Kaiser Education Foundation for the awesome three thousand. My daughter is twenty-one and she remembers running in it. My son is twelve. He doesn't run in it anymore because I was at a Little League tournament with him. We had to split duties, but my daughter was there running in it. It is a fantastic event that is an annual event that everybody looks forward to. Karina, thank you so much. The kids enjoy it. The other one I got to go to last weekend was the Country Company Relays that is also held at Willamette University where all of our, almost all of our elementaries and private schools and outlying schools compete in relays. It's a great event for kids, too. It's another running event. It's another day down at Willamette University. And so I'd like to thank Country Companies and all the other sponsors that helped put that on as well. I was not able to attend the retirement celebration of our Salem Kaiser staff that was held, but Nancy did go and I understand it was a great event and I'd just like to say thank you for all those retiring employees from the Salem Kaiser School District. Your dedication to our kids is greatly appreciated for all your years of service here. We appreciate everything you do. Finally, we have graduation ceremonies coming up. We already have the turnaround. I have the Eagle Feather Celebration. We're all going to be attending our high school graduations. That's a great opportunity for families and kids. And the last thing, Nancy, I thought you would definitely bring up is the South Salem Choir Championship. Again, we have one of our six A high schools in Salem Kaiser win the state choir championship. South Salem beat out Sprague by just that much.
First, tied for second and fourth out of, out of the five that are-
Competing.
That, that get named.
So we continue to bring back musical state championships in this district. It's something that is a pride point and something that we look forward to each year. So congratulations to South, even though they edged out my alma mater, Sprague. It was a great competition. So with that, is there anything else from board members? If not, I'll turn it over to Superintendent Radich. The one last thing I would say is I, I think I can see her around the corner. Welcome, Kristi. We're really looking forward to working with you throughout several years into the future.
Since the board so much enjoys going to Kaiser, I'm going to suggest that you go to Whittaker Middle School. I was there a few months ago on my school visits and was watching a duck taking care of some eggs. Those eggs hatched. There are a whole bunch of ducklings in the courtyard and middle school children are very careful with going through there. So if you get a chance before the ducks fly away, be a good spot to go. I want to extend my appreciation this evening to Salam Noor and to Paul Decopoulos for all their work with Chuck on the CTE agreement, lots and lots of hours of work behind the scenes. And also to Michael Wolf and Mira Kreitzer for their work on the boundary change. And then I would like to extend my appreciation to this board of directors. You have made a very wise decision in your selection of Kristi Perry as your next superintendent. I applaud your recommendation and your decision and look forward to seeing her leadership in this district. You've made a very, very good decision and I am very excited that Kristi will be coming to Salem Kaiser. Thank you.
Anything else to come before the board? If not, Kristi, if you could hang around, I do have a document that you need to sign, that I need to sign as well. So if not, we are adjourned. Thank you.